Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just going to quickly first thank you all for coming together. And if we could go around the room before I review the objectives, because not all of you do know each other. And just do a quick introduction with your name, the role that you play at your organization and your organization. And why don't we start with Greg? Since I can't see the screen and I know you are here, and then after you do it, if you could pass it on to the next person.
Sure, so my name is Greg Morris. For many years, I served as Executive Director of the Stanley Isaac's Neighborhood Center. When Isaac Center and Goddard Riverside got into a strategic alignment, my role changed. I am now Chief Program Officer at Goddard Riverside, which includes Goddard's programs and Isaac Center's programs. So very happy in this new role and this new opportunity. I'm going to pass it on to my colleague Damian Samuels, who's here, who runs the show.
Hello, everyone. Yes, and so as Greg aligned, I'm now the Associate Deputy Executive Director for Youth Services at Goddard Riverside. Really pleased to reconnect with many of you and to meet some of you for the first time, and I'll pass it to my colleague Shayla Simpson.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Shayla Simpson. I'm Director of Education and Workforce at Stanley Isaac Center, and I am happy to be on this call today. Are we popcorn in it? Should I just pass it to someone else?
Yeah, please.
I'll pass it to Dave.
I just want to make sure I'm the only Dave here. Dave's gone Manager of Work Solutions, Just First NYC. Now spoken with many of you before in one capacity or another, so looking forward to today. This will come up later, but of course throughout the whole event, if you have any questions that don't have time for today, please send them, Carrie, me, and we will get your answers. And let's see, see Andres here.
Hey, everyone. Good afternoon. So good to see you all. My name is Andre White. I am the CEO and Executive Director at Phipps Neighbors in the South Bronx. Thrilled to be a part of this conversation, and I'm going to kick it over to my Deputy ED, Dwayne Brown.
Good morning, good afternoon, everybody. Thanks, Andre. Dwayne Brown, Deputy Executive Director of Workforce and Education for Phipps Neighborhoods. Excited to see everybody inside to be a part of this group. I'll pass it on to my colleague Larry.
Hey, Dwayne. Welcome, everyone. So I'm Larry Rochelle, Director of Workforce Development at St. Nick's Alliance.
And it passed on to somebody, right?
I, yes. How about Nisha?
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Nisha Zemke, and I'm an Associate Dean in Academic Affairs at Gutman Community College. And nice to see some familiar faces in the room. Hello, hello, and delighted to be here, and I'll pass it over to my Provost Eva Fernandez.
Hi, everyone. My name is Eva Fernandez. I'm Provost at Gutman, collaborator of Nisha's. Excited to be here. And I believe that Jody has not introduced herself yet.
Thanks, Eva. I'm Jody Sturgeon. I'm the President and CEO of PHI. PHI works to improve the quality of direct care jobs. So home care workers, nursing assistants, and believes that that work improves the quality of care for marginalized communities that we're all friends. Happy to be here. A pleasure to meet those of you that I haven't.
Thanks, Jody. So I'll just take a quick minute to review our objectives for the day. Started already getting acquainted with each other, the work and relevant priorities, and discuss prior partnership experience, benefits, challenges, accomplishments, needs, and explore solutions to serve the employment needs of job seekers while being responsive to industry demands. Now, I'd like to, before we dig into some more about jobs first, oops, I was typing while I was starting meetings, so there's a typo there. But I'd like to go around the room, and if each of you could share something that has shifted or changed or bubbled up in your healthcare training priorities, what you're focusing on now, and if that's changed at all because of the pandemic. And I will get us back to a gallery view. And it could be one person from each organization, if that makes sense. And why don't we go in reverse order, and Jody, start with you?
Sure. I mean, I think the two biggest things for us that we're seeing and the needs that we're seeing with employers is the need for hybrid, if not fully online, training, just in terms of access, but also topic-specific training beyond entry level. So beyond bringing job seekers into the field, what we're seeing is a strong need for disease-specific, long COVID-specific, other types of topics that their training needs are significant at this point.
Thanks, Jody. Anyone want to volunteer?
I can go. So for St. Nick's, I think, like, a real need for internships in healthcare. You know, that was a little bit difficult during the pandemic, and I think that, you know, we're working mostly with young adults, and that's a critical piece of getting the clinical internships.
I'll go. So echoing a little bit of what Larry said, we work with young adults as well. And I think as we sort of come out of this pandemic, we are looking for job placement in the healthcare field as well as internships. One thing that I think, of course, no surprise here, that has changed is the fact that most placements, whether job placements or internships, are requiring that our participants are fully vaccinated with flu shot, COVID-19. So that's been just a little bit tough to sort of recruit underneath those new parameters. And because most of them want the students to be fully vaccinated prior to onboard. And so like, they have to have both shots, and I think some of them are actually implementing the booster as well. So it's something that we've had to include in all of our literature and our curriculum and stuff as we prepare to recruit students, to just let them know that this is now a requirement in the healthcare field. So you must have this to participate in our program, because the idea is to place you immediately after training.
Yeah, Eva?
The follow-up on that, I'll say that all of our students are now required to be boosted and fully vaccinated. So this means that then working with any City University of New York student gives you that added attraction, I guess. We've had some really interesting, I guess, growth experience, learning how to deliver internships online. But now, as we come back, I mean, some of the things that you all mentioned are things that I've been hearing around Gutman, too. One thing that I did want to mention, and this is a little bit of a self-promotional advertisement, we're starting a major in health information technology. Actually, just yesterday, we posted two faculty positions we'll be hiring. So I thought that you would be a really good group to maybe take a look at those. We're launching this major, in part, the plans were in place before the pandemic, but we see accelerated demand for this field during the pandemic also. So I'll post the link in the chat for sure, and please help us recruit great people.
Thanks, Eva.
I think for us, some of the challenges, I would just highlight that, is just, we found that motivation of people to work, right? I think that is something that we kind of tried to push past, and we've been seeing a little bit of a rebound. Now, we just, we're launching a career network in healthcare next week, and so we've gotten more, we've done, we've gotten more interest in the last couple of weeks. I would tell you, we struggled a few months back in our last quarter, making sure that we had enough students to make it through the process, because that's another thing, right? They have to make it through the actual programming, and having, fighting that. A lot of, a lot of the, our participants, some of them want that instant gratification. So keeping them engaged, we're finding out case management and wraparound support services are key to our engagement strategy and keeping them going. And so that's where we've kind of been, we're getting a little bit better. We're starting to see the corner turn, we hope.
Thank you. I think every entity has spoken, and thank you all. Yeah, it's not that different from what we're hearing across sectors. There are obviously some things that are unique to healthcare, and maybe some of the requirements are more widespread around, you know, vaccination, things like that. But it's similar, obviously, for city workers and lots of other sectors. So it's not, it's not that, you know, different from what we're hearing across the labor market in New York City. Thank you for sharing, and we'll dig a little bit deeper into your experience and your needs. I want to just pass over to Marjorie right now, just to give some overview. I know most of us know each other, but there's a couple of new faces, so we'll give an overview of jobs first and our sector networks and sector network strategy. So Marjorie, to you.
Great. Thank you, Carrie. Can you hear me well?
Yes.
Having problems all morning. So for those of you who do not know, it was instructive to just do a quick overview here of who we are. We were founded about 16 years ago through a collaborative process across the five boroughs of New York City, when we had 200-plus thousand young adults who were out of work, not at school. I hear a story about how the partners across the four of the five boroughs bounced names around and ended up with JobSource NYC. I could tell you the other five names that they shared with us, some of them were quite funny. We work with about 160 partners across New York City. We're a mutual partner. We bring diverse partnerships together as we try to collaborate and scale outcomes, or good outcomes, or collaborate to test new ideas. Our process here is the one that we follow for all the work that we do. You know, all of us agree on what is the problem that we're trying to solve together, agree on what the solution should be, and then we test those solutions, and then the ones that work, we effort to scale them. Scale means replication, it means investment, it means the systems that we're working with, and we're trying to change those systems, we begin to respond to the changes that work better, and that could show up simply in the city of New York deciding to adapt something that we tested that produced better results. This is a process roadmap that is in front of you. This process is consistent and standard across all of our work. We start with data, asset infrastructure is really looking at what's in place, what's working, where the gaps, what does the market tell us about what we're doing, and then in the goal setting as a partner, once we identify what the problems are, once we have all the information that we can have, then we begin to make some decisions around what we need to be doing. And then this is a project through every initiative has a set of what we call measurable infrastructure process that, you know, as we get through with them, we know that if we completed these things, then the partnership is in good shape. And we have a list of that, that list here, you can see that someplace else. We really, in terms of our value, is, we'd like to say that we have no good ideas of JobSource. Anytime we come up with a good idea, it usually comes from the field, it usually comes from what communities are telling us. And our job is to, you know, we said we're all experts, right? One of the challenges of collaboration is, some of my colleagues and one of my favorite communities often tell me, we can do everything that you do, just give me the stuff. And I said, well, that would be perfect if that was the case, if that evidence of that, right? I said, partnership is about each of us bringing our expertise to the table and respecting each other's expertise and seeing how we can help each other do the work. You wouldn't ask me to come to your community if you didn't think I had something to add to it, right? So we have those fights all the time. I just love those conversations. Our solutions are focused on these three areas that you see here, which is community, which are place-based work, where we're really investing in infrastructure for community and how we can work together to really address stubborn issues that really diminishes sometimes individual success. People make it a good job, and then the issues that are historical and challenging the community affect their ability to kind of have that breakout moment that they have, now that they've made some progress. Education is really around for us. You know, we know across 18 communities in New York City, high numbers of young people are out of work or at school. Across those communities, those schools in those communities are also where you have high numbers of young people who are leaving school without a plan, without a strategy. We're not going to college, and we want to make sure that we send the info of those young people into the out-of-school, out-of-work population. Our plan, master plan here, is that every young person who graduates from high school leaves with a plan. They go to college, they go to training, they go into work. No one should walk out of high school without a plan. Work is really this sector work, the one that you are involved in, or what we're having a conversation about today is, what are the practices and policies that we can advance here that helps us to scale our work? And one of our great challenges that we have as a sector is really our inability to get employers at scale in sector to see us as a place to go and seek this, and seek the talent. So they go to college, they go to employment agencies, they go to LinkedIn, but we don't naturally show up in that metrics as, here are these folks that do the shorter-term training that are very responsive to market. There are no more responsive sector to the market than our sector. We can get people trained and out to the market in the shortest period of time. It's the advantage that we have, right? So how do we do that to make sure that we are now shown up in those metrics of places? So that's what the work is, you know, solutions works about, is about advancing and developing new practice. And the policy work is really about a system change. It's really about changing the infrastructure around how investment happen, about how practice gets adapted, and how both government and philanthropy invest in good practice. So that's us, that's the work that we do. Many of you know this work, and so I want to thank you for for being a part of this next phase of the Young Adult Sectoral Employment Initiative that we're launching now. And I look forward to working with you during this time.
Thanks, Marjorie. I'm going to try my best to control two screens at once, so forgive me for any hiccups. So Marjorie really covered what our Work Solutions portfolio does, and that practices, and the results are rooted in building and maintaining and sustaining innovative and effective partnerships. So our JobSource was founded to improve economic outcomes for young adults and to ensure that they have more and better jobs ultimately, and that the systems are holding any changes that are made to improve conditions in place. We focus on employment and career pathways to do that, retention and advancement in jobs, employer networks and employer needs, and strengthening institutional and employer practice. YASIP, which is one of our work solutions that some of you here were a part of, and it was the first demonstration project in the nation to test the effectiveness of adapting sector-based employment strategies for 18 to 24-year-olds. And it is an evidence-based model that was conceptualized in response to findings from the 2011 Sexual Employment Impact Study. And it brings together, or brought together, an innovative learning community of employers, CBOs, and training providers to design sector training approaches that better serve employers and young people who are being left out of the labor market with an explicit demand focus that was driven by labor market data and employer needs and specific employer partner needs that were part of the community. For JobSource role, we raised and we granted resources. We built this community of practice that you kind of see visualized on the screen here. We did testing, capacity building, and continuous improvement. And together with the YASIP partners, we developed a new outcomes framework that really elevated the importance of partnership and the importance of systems change. And from this work, and with many of the leading workforce development agencies in New York City, and some are now national, 10 sector training programs launched in healthcare, green jobs, tech, transportation logistics, culinary, and technical theater. And one group actually involved into a employer-led seasonal talent exchange that was Wildlife Conservation Society. So this has kind of led us into an expansion of that work and why we're here together today. Sector networks, it builds on the knowledge that we gain from recognizing this effective practice and the process of launching the two YASIP cohorts and the related projects that were galvanized by YASIP models, including benchmarking for YASIP and sector boost. And the networks are really aiming to increase workforce development capacity, scale best practice and best-in-class training programs, and to be responsive to the labor market while increasing access to good jobs and advancing systems improvement. Over the past 15 months, JobSource with partners Green City Force, the HOPE Program, and Non-Traditional Employment for Women have been leading the development of one of the sector networks, the Green Economy Network for New York City. And this is a multi-stakeholder approach to building an inclusive green economy and advancing access to economic opportunity. I'm just letting Casey from 110 in the room. The Green Economy Network is focused on three key goals right now: to develop new trainings and connect existing ones to increase and deepen employer relationships and systems and policies that are aligned to the new needs of New York's growing green economy, both for workers and for employers. And similarly, with a group of high-quality tech training writers, we've developed a technology sector network, which is also focused on similar goals. They want to be a collective bargaining mechanism with employers, a go-to source for talent with less than a four-year degree in the tech sector. They're working to establish a data set, tools, a way of collecting and sharing information that can exhibit the impact of skills-based hiring. And they are scaling training, creating upskilling pipelines, and finding other ways really to partner with each other and potentially impact policies in New York City around tech training and CUNY articulations. And, wrong direction. I'm going to pause there. Let me take this down, because Casey has joined us. And I think, hi, Casey, I'll let you introduce yourself. Casey is the case lead, sorry, butchering your title, I don't have it in front of me, case team leader, I think it is, with the Bridgestone Group, and she's the leading, the regional lead, you tell me, you tell them, for 110 in the Northeast area.
Yeah, that was it. I mean, different words, same essence. As Carrie said, I work with the Bridgestone Group, who has been supporting 110 for the past year and a half, like since inception, with the goal that 110 will hire its own staff to leave this work. But I'm kind of the interim solution here to talk to you about what 110 is and how we're working with JobSource. Carrie, have you talked about what our relationship with JobSource looks like, or should I cover that as well?
I have not.
Cool. Well, this will be like a fun reversal, where I explain what you do and probably get the words wrong as well. But one of, or the main way that we are working in different markets is by identifying a really strong key player that is already within the city, working within the community, that has connections to both talent and then talent and skill-in programs. And so we call that Position the Community Development Lead, and so JobSource is our community development lead in New York. And we have a number of other partners across cities in the US. But New York is by far the biggest and most exciting. Don't tell anyone I said that. So we're excited to be working with JobSource, and they give us really awesome opportunities to meet with lovely organizations like all of yours. So I'm here to talk about 110. I will try and give a brief and comprehensive overview, but I'm happy to answer any questions as we go through, and also you should all maybe have my contact information. If not, Carrie can share it afterwards, if you want to reach out with questions directly. So I am currently sharing a slide. Can you all see it? Yes. So I believe some of you have already heard the 110 story, so I'll try and make it a little exciting or urban for those of you that are repeat. But 110 is a corporate coalition of companies that have committed to hiring and upscaling 1 million black individuals without bachelor's degrees over the next 10 years. So it's really focused on creating opportunities for black individuals without bachelor's degrees in the US. When a company joins 110, they're committing to several different things. The first and foremost is that hiring and retention of black talent within their organizations. The other thing they're committing to is joining a community of practice. Both their CEOs and their heads of HR have separate communities that practice each quarter to discuss anything related to 110 so that formerly has a spotlight on black talent either within the organizations or external to the organizations and how their career journey has progressed, different obstacles that they were faced with in their journey in part because of corporate practices that shouldn't be what they are. And then also an opportunity for CEOs and CHRs to present to each other of things that they've instituted in their organizations, what went well, what they would do differently. And then within that community of practice, there are also a number of working groups where we really dig deep on specific topics, whether that's shifting to skills-first hiring, improving retention, identifying opportunities for upskilling and advancement, identifying ways to support veterans and veteran families. And there's, I think, about one on rural jobs as well. So basically, wherever there's an employer interest as it relates to the 110 goal, and they want additional support, we've been able to launch a working group for anyone within the company that really leans into the 110 work itself. So normally, the DEI lead, the actual hiring manager, is HR personnel as well. And then the last expectation from a 110 employer is to contribute financially to 110, which then 110 is using to fund our work in communities. So questions on like, what a 110 employer is committing to, or what they've all signed up for in being a part of 110? Should check the chat. Okay. Awesome. So then, as I mentioned, 110 is specifically focused on black individuals without bachelor's degrees. So that's the one goal that we are tracking for 1 million. We are obviously in doing this with the hope that it improves opportunities for all people within the workforce of the United States. So specifically tracking the black individuals without bachelor's degrees, but with the acknowledgement that we're partnering with organizations that skill all types of people, and we're partnering with companies that hire all kinds of people. So this by no means is solely focused on benefiting black people in the US. It's focused on really rising all ships within the workforce development landscape in the country. I will keep going until someone shouts at me to stop, so feel free to jump in with questions, either verbally or in the chat. So we've gotten a lot of questions about like, what is a 110 job? So we have four different categories we use. The first and most important is that that job provides a family-sustaining wage. So we use the MIT Living Wage Calculator to determine that. In the New York area, it's around $63,000, and that includes benefits. The second is that the jobs are not going to be immediately automated, so we're really looking at jobs that are here to stay that can provide lasting careers to individuals. And then the second bucket of qualifications we're looking for are, they don't require a four-year degree, and they don't require an extensive amount of experience. So not all of 110 jobs are entry-level. Some of them are mid-level management. They require a couple of years of education, but they are all aiming to be accessible. And so we work with employers to help identify like, what within your job, like open job openings, could you potentially remove the four-year degree requirement? Okay, great, you've removed the four-year degree requirement. Are you actually hiring people without a four-year degree? If not, like, what are the barriers to getting you to do that? How can we help? How can we connect you to non-four-year-degree talent? So that's what we look at when we're talking about 110 jobs.
Casey, there's a thing about...
Yeah, I see. I was going to ask the question, but Dave already jumped in saying it's coming up.
It's coming up. I have a slide with all of our partners. It's also on our website, where you can see all of the companies that have joined the coalition and have signed all the things that say we can lift their logo. There are, I think, like five to 10 that have joined, and like, their logo is not on our website, so we are ever-growing. Right now, but it's mostly Fortune 500 companies, in part because we were founded by Ken Frazier of Merck, engineer at Medias, IBM, and then Ken Chenault of American Express, and they, all their friends are Fortune 500 CEOs. So like, by the network effect, that's who we've recruited, but we're looking to expand to smaller companies as well. Awesome. Dave just took my punchline, our year-one progress that he shared the link to in the chat. Thanks, Dave, of what we were able to accomplish in the first year. Some key highlights are, our employers are able to hire 17,000 individuals into 110 jobs, so 17,000 black individuals without bachelor's degrees into those family-sustaining wage jobs, and then 4,000 promotions. So really strong progress for year one that we're excited to build off of. And then the thing that I'm really excited about is this um, seventeen hundred number. So this is the amount of hours that senior leadership within our companies have invested into one ten, either through the communities of practice. Decredentially in conversations and the commitment that they've had to like talking to new talent developers to form those relationships. So we're really excited by the amount of time and effort that's been invested for companies to um, really commit to this change. And Dave posted the link in the chat, so you can fully read through all of the exciting stuff that happened in year one and where we're looking to go in the future. So, um, as it relates to all of you, you all host um, scaling programs. So as we think about how one ton is working with talent or helping to identify talent, get people um, connected to these job opportunities, we think, we call them talent developers, people who say scaling programs. Um, but there are a number of ways that we're um, partnering with talent developers in the first name one is endorsement. So we look at your program, say like, yes, y'all, y'all are doing great work. And then you would have access to a number of opportunities with one ten. Um, so the first and foremost is you would get connected to the employers and the jobs that are within the one ten network. The second is you would be listed as one of our endorsed talent developers, both on our national website and our national um, pro- promotion, but then also when we start to do on the ground marketing in New York, your organization would be um, promoted through that. Uh, we also have a number of wraparound supports nationally, and we are planning to launch them locally that your students would have access to both when they're in your program and then after. So we've been able to offer uh, backup childcare to all of our talent developers in Dallas. And then we've offered point to point transit in Philly. And so we're trying to figure out like what works, what people are interested in, but that's one thing that we've been offering as well. Um, the technology system where a lot of this is hosted, both the jobs and where you could get connected to new talent to sign up for your programs. And I'll talk about that a little bit more in a second. Um, there are also opportunities for financial support with one times. As I mentioned, employers are contributing to one time financially, which we have then been able to grant out to our endorsed network. Um, so there's been a general support grant, just acknowledging the time and effort it takes to to go through endorsement. And then there will be other future opportunities for grant support. And then another thing we're really excited about that's fairly new is the community of practice for talent developers. So we've been able to bring together everyone within our network nationally, which is about ninety five organizations right now to talk about um, systems change um, and different components related to scaling and hosting um, scaling programs. And so we've let our talent followers kind of set the agenda of what they're most interested to talk about in that forum, but we have our second one coming up in a couple of months. So that's what we've been offering our town to build for partners. This list was curated after a number of conversations with nonprofit organizations, or profit organizations and some community colleges. So we think it's pretty holistic, but we're also always willing and excited to hear of other things that talent partners would be interested in having from one ten as a part of our network. Okay, I'll keep going. All right. So I mentioned the tech platform um, in the offerings. So this is a a slide that walks through it, but Carrie, I think can share a video afterwards, kind of giving a view of what it actually looks like in in action. Um, but there are three key users of this tech platform. It's really as a place to connect all of our three key users, whether that's companies with jobs, black talent that are actually looking for jobs, or talent developers that offer programs that can help bridge black talent to jobs, also acknowledging that there are plenty of people that can just go directly into jobs. Um, so this platform currently exists, it's in like version two. So we're still like learning and taking a lot of feedback from end users. Um, but it provides both opportunities for people, black talent to get connected to a job, but also to get connected to your programs if you're hosted on here. And Dave, yes, mentioned that it's uh, powered by our AI partner and it's called Eightfold. Um, it has a lot of really cool AI uh, components that I can not fully explain how the AI works, but basically it helps people create a resume, get actually matched to a job based off the skills that are within their resume and the skills that the job is looking for. And we can also help create a tailored resume for a specific job. And they can also help map someone's career trajectory based off of what they're interested in, what skills they have now and how they can grow in the future. And I can, I think I've, yeah, this is the list of all of our employers. Um, as of, I think, November or December, so it's definitely gotten longer since then, but you'll note that it's a lot of big companies, as I mentioned, but it's a pretty good mix of industries. And we do have a number of healthcare organizations uh, both in New York and then also outside of New York. Um, and then the full, I think, probably a little bit more updated list is also on our website. I will pause for any questions. I know that was a lot of information. Also happy if you want to have a go furthermore in depth chat um, one on one or with Jobs First, happy to do that as well.
Thanks. Questions, comments?
And if you have, oh, good.
I was just saying, I feel like I completely overwhelmed everyone. Feel free to reach out afterwards if you have questions.
I I just would like, I think this is a great initiative and and and, you know, kudos for all the work that's been done. Um, I I want to figure out how we can do a better job promoting this. Because I wasn't aware of this initiative and I think this is excellent. And I, you know, I think people in uh, my network would be interested in understanding and learning more about this. So um, for me is, you know, how can I do, uh, how can I support in 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 promoting uh, this kind of initiative that I, it it just seems like it's 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 well run. It's a well fought out. Um, a lot of work and and commitment that's been put to it. So, um, yeah, just let us know if it's how we can help promote.
Yeah, it, great question. That's part of what Jobs First is going to be working on as the community development lead for New York. It's about a lot of it's about just first letting people know that this exists, then letting people know what the value proposition is. Figuring out how to get the message out to job seekers, to SMEs. And really get to more people involved in this, because this is one of those uh, things where the more people get involved, the better the system becomes, the more value is actually created overall. Uh, so we will work on that. And of course, we welcome any suggestions and input that you have. One tends during this a lot of markets, but as Casey pointed out, the New York market is always a bit different, not least because of its sheer scale and number of entities involved. So getting the word out is perhaps more time consuming, but also more valuable in the long run. And we also have, Casey didn't mention as we talk about as much, but there's also an employer lead for New York. Uh, Jobs First is working with the employer lead. And so none of the items are mutually exclusive, right? We're also talking with employers. They're talking with workforce developers, but really trying to split the load because it's such a mammoth undertaking.
I I had a question. It it occurs to me that we we might be uh, interested in being an employer as well as a developer. I just wonder if you see that happening at all, if some of the folks that you're working with as offering the training also are wanting to be those that are hiring and uh, and sort of marked as employers as well.
We have a couple of organizations that are both a talent developer and an employer. Um, it takes a a number of different forms. So a good example is IBM is an employer, but they also offer PTAC, which is um, a high school equivalent for a technology training. And then um, Bright Horizons is a really good example of like someone that's kind of straddling all of the different archetypes. So they um, offer childcare or or childcare vouchers are through Bright Horizons and their childcare network. They also are employer and then they also um, offer trainings through one of their subsidiary companies. So that's definitely something we've seen before. Um, and normally our our team that works with employers is like able to figure out what that means specifically for you. And if you would start as a town helper and then scale to an employer, if you would start as a player, scale to a town developer and start with both. Um, so happy to have that conversation, probably more one on one.
And feel free, since tons of information going out to you, to check out the FAQ, check out the year one report and then send us all your questions. Uh, send the cases and the carries into me. We'll get them to whoever has the answers. And of course, we can talk more next time if anyone has things that are very discussed in group conversation. Since we're a little bit short on time, if no one has any questions for right now, go ahead to the next section. If we have some time at the end and you have some questions, bring it up then and we'll come back to that. Uh, right now, it's going to present a little bit of healthcare data that uh, hopefully is useful. Some of this are things that you've all seen before. Some of this might be uh, new to you. Uh, so what we're looking here at the, in this first slide is some real time information about uh, job postings uh, for healthcare sector, more specifically uh, healthcare support broadly uh, in New York City specifically. And this is coming from uh, job postings across various uh, services de duplicated. So these are correct, uh, only active in the past uh, three months. Don't worry, the numbers will come back in a moment. And this also includes some wage data, although only about twelve percent of job postings tend to include the include the wages. So this is not going to be fully accurate. And of course, between Omicron and everything else, even though this this information gets updated daily and or just grab this this week, uh, who knows what next month will look like, but probably nothing surprising, right? That nursing assistants, medical assistants, home health aides and personal care aides are the top uh, in demand jobs. Um, in the next slide, we're going to see instead of occupation uh, job titles, which again, very similar. Uh, some of it just depends upon how these things get categorized. I was looking uh, some months ago at the hospitality jobs in New York City and Baker, one hundred percent tuition reimbursed was one of the top jobs in New York City because Starbucks was hiring so many people. Uh, so it can also be in fact about the way that these things get classified, although in healthcare, usually things are categorized pretty well. That's less true sometimes in hospitality or certain other industries. Uh, this probably doesn't probably no, no, the numbers here are surprising in terms of employers either. Uh, unsurprisingly, the the biggest healthcare entities are the biggest employers. Uh, and really the the point about having the job ads here is also important to see as compared to jobs closed, because that gives a sense of turnover. Uh, so when there's high turnover places are closing lots of job ads and opening lots of shop ads. Uh, and if there are, there are some times where you're going to see place issues where things get counted in weird ways, like uh, Columbia will show sometimes it's Columbia and then Columbia's faculty branch or sometimes Amazon shows up as one thing and then Amazon Web Services as another thing. But in uh, as far as healthcare goes, this is less of an issue. And again, probably things that you've already seen, but in case this raises any questions, happy to discuss with us later. Uh, and then going to the next slide can see a little bit different. Uh, this is not real time information. This is information mostly from Q three twenty twenty one, with the exception of wages. Uh, the federal government only publishes detailed wage information uh, each spring looking that shows the information for the previous spring. So when you're out, which normally is fine, these honestly are not normal times. Uh, but still kind of useful to get a sense about where the growth forecasts are, what the wages kind of look like. If anyone's curious to dive in more and just want some easily publicly available data, the New York Department, New York State Department of Labor website always has some great information that is not greatly presented or easy to find at all. Uh, but it is always there and free. Yes, the staffing pattern, again, I think this is useful. Per depending upon the kind of trainings you're doing or what people are interested, thinking about the difference between the people who are in healthcare and doing medical work uh, versus the ones who are not in doing medical work per se, but are obviously crucial to the execution of the industry successfully. So trying to get a sense of what those other occupations look like in terms of wages. Again, this is going to be some early twenty twenty one data, once the uh, twenty, or sorry, uh, some of this is twenty twenty one data, some of this is actually twenty twenty data. Again, once the latest data comes out on wages, we'll look at that, get that information to you. But of course, by the time that those new numbers come out, they may well already be partially obsolete. That's part of why that real time information from the job postings is so useful. Uh, pretty consistently, those numbers are higher. Uh, this really just giving you an overview of healthcare in New York City. Uh, perhaps unsurprisingly, healthcare jobs form a bigger part of total employment in the city than they do nationwide, given how many big medical institutions we have here. Uh, also unsurprisingly, the healthcare industry is growing in New York uh, city as it is generally growing uh, nationwide. Uh, so generally things going in a good direction in terms of wages, employment. Uh, and as we see on, I think, the next slide and also in terms of the oh, actually, yes. Uh, so this just giving a quick breakdown. Again, these are not the absolute latest figures because those figures don't exist yet. But just looking at a breakdown of the demographics of the industry, I think is super useful in trying to understand who's going into these, who's already in these positions. Uh, it would be great to see a side by side of who's already in these positions and who's applying for and interested in these positions right now, but not already in there. But really trying to understand what the, what the sector looks like in New York City and how we can change it if we want to change it. And next slide. Oh, yes, this was thinking of. So we hear a lot about uh, mergers and acquisitions in the healthcare industry, like any other industry, but actually in New York City, at least through twenty twenty, uh, consolidation has not been the name of the game, the number of healthcare entities. Uh, or entities in which healthcare workers work uh, has continued to to grow at a considerable pace. Uh, again, some of these uh, establishments can might be schools. They might not be the traditional uh, healthcare establishments that we think about, but it just means that at the same time that we have more hiring happening and more demand for labor in the city, we also more individual entities that are hiring, which in some ways makes it more difficult for us to reach out to everyone, but also means more places where people can work and more competition, which hopefully drives up wages for our trainees. Uh, yeah, so I know that was a lot of information, very quick, nothing no, don't worry about any specific takeaways, but if anyone has questions, I'll see if there's something you think about later and want to know more, happy to discuss that with anyone. Great. Well, again, if you have any questions later, feel free to send them uh, to me or to Carrie and we'll try to get to some uh, answers. Uh, for now, we're going to switch over and talk about you and what you're doing. Uh, Carrie, if you want to take over from there.
Yeah, sure. Um, thanks, Dave. So yeah, I'm no more slides. We're just, we just want to be be in a room uh, in the space with you and hear from you about, you know, anything that you've heard today so far, anything that you have questions about or reflections on that. Um, and also just, you know, bigger picture, like what what's going on for you in healthcare? We touched on this in the beginning. Um, we're really curious to know if any of you have been part of um, networked partnerships of uh, like groups of agencies working together in healthcare training or something similar to that. If you have like that type of partnership and network experience and what about that has potentially worked and not worked if if you've been a part of that. Um, and what you think a network structure like what we described for the Green Economy Network and what we described the tech sector network is doing. What you think as a group, we might be able to focus on and accomplish together, what what needs and challenges. I'll pause there. Um, and again, you know, popcorn, I'd like to make it just informal conversation. And again, you know, popcorn, I'd like to make it just informal conversation, wishing we were around a table together. But would love to hear from you.
I'll start and I'll say, I feel like I'm I'm still in the position where I'm learning so much about it's kind of like how this group functions and and kind of how we fit in and which ways it makes sense to to really engage. But some of the question that comes up for me is, you know, thinking about work, I would say we're still on the early side of doing, but connecting with settlement houses and that kind of model across the city. We're looking at the umbrella organization as well as specific organizations, including some folks in this room. Now, how do we start to really engage? You know, as a place that offers a different kinds of training and education with the community more broadly, listen to to that community well? And then I would say also, and I kind of was thinking about this too. In the context of this conversation and the different, you know, pieces we've had of like, how do we feedback in, right? So how do we help students learn about the opportunities that sit right in those neighborhood houses or support healthcare needs in that community? So I I those are some of the things I'm thinking. I feel like we're learning a lot and we want to become better and better at serving the communities that we're connecting with. And maybe one of the questions is then how do we make sure that we're? If we're sort of thinking of a pipeline coming from the neighborhood houses, how do we also build back in, right? Maybe offer that talent and help explain the where the talent can go right back into those communities, including the healthcare component, right? And so I was thinking about conversations we're having about building a community health worker program, case management. The Provost talked about health information technology program. We have a human services program and trying to make that a richer sort of ecosystem, maybe. So that's one of the things I thought of. I don't know, you know, exactly how to engage this group around those ideas. But that's what makes me excited, I guess, of being in this room and hearing about some of the initiatives that you're pulling together.
Thank you, Nisha. Yeah, I think, you know, you're beginning to talk about like, what's the connectivity and potential pathways for people to have options, right, of different types of trainings or advancement opportunities? Which may be more relevant, there may be overlap of some things that you do and some what some folks in this room does. So how does that, what Nisha said, resonate with others in the room?
Well, I'll jump in. Definitely resonates with me in trying to, again, I think we all are glad to be in the room and figure out what's the right rhythm of this group, right? And I think that there's two things that's that that kind of jump out to me of ideas on how we could collaborate. One, promotion of the healthcare in general, healthcare services and the 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 need for healthcare. Like, is there something, is there a campaign that we can do as a collective? You know, I, you know, our reach is the Bronx, like, you know, that's where we particularly reach out to. But I think as a whole, this whole city needs to know about the the opportunities that exist in healthcare and how important it is. So as 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 a network, can we come together and and create some kind of campaign that we all can do and be a part of to promote these opportunities in healthcare? And then second, a second opportunity that that I see or I think that may be is, once we get them into the healthcare field, what we just partnered with the Urban New York Urban League to really help us with the upscaling of our of our of our participants? Is there an opportunity to share resources around that, right? We don't want to just get them a job, we want to make sure that they have a career, right? And that there's opportunities for advancement. So are we, you know, sharing resources around curriculum or how we get them to the next step in their careers? I think that might be something, it may be something that we refer people to. I may have a great participant that starts off with me and then, you know, I can take her, take them but to so far. And then I call Larry at St. Nixon, say, hey, Larry, I got this participant here. Now they're ready for this new job that you got with the big hospital down in Brooklyn and, and, you know, making those kind of connections. So I think, you know, come come up with some kind of campaign together, promotion about all the healthcare and then figuring out how we help our participants, you know, upscale with the opportunities, you know, exist.
I think for, oh, sorry. No, go ahead, Jody.
I agree with everything that's been said. I think for me, what I'm, what I would love for this network to be able to do is is balance and lift up the importance of bringing people into the field and upskilling and advancement. I mean, obviously PHI doesn't auto work in that space. I think the thing for me is this notion of raising the floor and building ladders, I I think is critical. And particularly right now, given, you know, the the basic, the basic data, the basic demographics say that, you know, the 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 entry level positions are the fastest growing jobs in the city. And so how do we make those jobs better? While also giving opportunity to folks to to upskill and to move into different positions? And so I just think that there's a way, I would love for there to be a way for us as a network to to hold both equally, improve the improve the entry level job, you know, so that it is a career, right? Like, because that's the thing, like, and it's real. It's not a career because it's, you know, it's not a quality job, you know, the 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 salary isn't what people need. And so but how do we as a network pull both of those things together and say, but we want to give people who want the opportunity ways to move? But we also want to, you know, really take on the fact that this very critical set of jobs on the frontline are not quality jobs. For me, if if we as a group could could achieve that, I would be thrilled.
Sure. So I'll I'll sort of echo what Jody said. I think you said everything I was going to say. I really just was thinking about healthcare and sort of the wage and just wanting to speak to our students, getting opportunities after completing training that are not just entry level positions and also have a higher wage so that they can be on their way to the career path. Something that we do in Stanley Isaacs, we have a healthcare cohort and we do two trainings. So one, we do an HHA training and then we also accompany with another CDO and do a CNA program. One thing that we've been sort of ramping up in our training programs is making sure that we get our students certified in certain areas so that when they go to these jobs, they're not just, you know, a medical assistant, but they might be a medical assistant who specializes in phlebotomy or who has some technician experience. We've been getting them CPR training and some psychological trainings just because we've been connecting with other organizations who offer healthcare opportunities and just trying to figure out what does, what do we need to prepare the students for? Like, how can we get them a little bit higher than entry level positions when they go into these these employment opportunities? I think one thing beneficial for this group is just sharing best practices and resources. I think we've been having a challenge in getting our students in sort of these hospitals. Like, how do you get into the hospital? You know, who's the connection or what person should we connect on or speak with? We have a couple of internship opportunities right now in staff that work and are trying to work with metropolitan hospitals. Just like, what what's the language that you speak? You know, when you're sort of seeking these opportunities, what language do you use? How do you prepare these students to get into these roles? Because we know that they have to be a part of the employment system in order to see what jobs are available. So I I think that's what I'm looking more to connect with everyone on, like some of the best practices and resources you guys may have and sharing amongst each other.
I'll add to that. I mean, I think I agree with everything that's been said. St. Nick's, we we also run an HHA training and we run, we run PCT and CNA training for young adults. And I think, I think that what really resonates here is that we really do need to find ways for higher wages for entry level jobs in healthcare and opportunities for advancement. That that's really key. And I do think that there's a big opportunity here to share best practices and resources, potentially on internship opportunities. Maybe there's also a way to develop a mentor network as well in healthcare that, especially for young adults, that that could be helpful as well.
Thank you, Sheila, Jody, Larry. You're naming, you know, all the things that networks can do better and more powerfully, I think, together than one individual agency. I know some of you work on wealthy issues as part of the work that you do and some of you probably have been investigating and collecting best practices. And I know there's some overlap of what trainings you you do. But obviously, there's not really competition, right? Because this labor shortage in healthcare is projected just to be far beyond what any of our agencies even combined could could train for. So, yeah, I mean, I I I love, you know, what I'm hearing. I I don't know, I I am not familiar with any sort of like healthcare network that is bringing together training providers such as yourselves. And so, you know, my my conversation, we had a similar conversation early on with tech partners and there were a few. And so there was this conversation of like, where did they succeed, where did they fail? But I don't think there's really something like that in healthcare. And then there's a lot that that I don't know that you all probably do about the intricacies of the union. And, you know, there's that whole piece of it and where would we want to involve them, if at all, in in these conversations? So a lot to learn from you. And, you know, the the early things I'm hearing around like a shared marketing campaign just for the sector overall, you know, changing the impression of it, recruitment, cross-agency referral, ways of like sort of maybe sorting or organizing the the pool of candidates based on what their interests are, even if it's not your agency, maybe it's another agency that's training in in the thing that that's right for that person. Obviously, upskilling, advanced training that some of you do and some of you don't do. So there's, there are a lot of areas for collaboration. And then equally as important, Jody, what you raised is this balancing of job quality and policy and and how together can we really push on those levers, right? And the Green Economy Network is doing this now in real time. So I have some experience with a network of forty some odd organizations that have been coming together, working in like a task force model to quickly get together a set of proposals to get in front of the incoming administration as they came in in January to say, like, there's investments happening in infrastructure and the green economy and it's going to be coming through the city. And we want to be part of that conversation of how it's determined, how the, what the policies are, how the money is spent, how it job ties to job creation. So, you know, there's a lot that a coalition of training providers can do together, leveraging all of your own resources and knowledge. Just looking at time and I'm wanting to make sure that we kind of prepare you for another meeting. Oh, Lakeitha, your hand is raised. Let me turn to you first.
No problem. Hi, this is Lakeitha. I work for Strive. We've done, so currently we do help with support training. We're getting people into more of the like patient transporter, hospitality maintenance. And then we also have more of one that's designed for the health office opportunities, which you could see in the chart is still growing, where they get electronic health records certification. I was a part of a consortium in the past, but it was more informal. It was with NIAC and like a couple of others of us who were all building at the time. We were building a pathway for the health office type of jobs. And it was designed so that we didn't have, we could just learn from each other since you know that nobody, as you mentioned, is going to put a dent in the in the in the labor market demand. And so that way, when we're branching into an area where there is opportunity, we weren't all of us creating different, but we were, and there wasn't a partner, so a part of the network. So I, we've also in the past did a advancement training. We actually got some limited funds from Kellogg's to do, to take people who were working in entry level office, health office positions and help them move up to a medical billing. So and that was like taking people who are employed and training them in the evening. So my thought, I'm in, I'm in favor of us going further. It was really helpful to be a part of a network that was sharing curriculum. I also was a part of something that UMass did to help get people, more people in upper Manhattan into unions. And so that was partnership with 1199. And so that was a group of us working together to really bring about improvements since 1199. And so I've seen the power of of companies being able to band together to get into the union, go a little bit further. And so I'm in favor of all of those. I just, I think also typically I, I don't know that people think of childcare tradition as as a part of the healthcare, but it's, I see when you're talking about union, it's really necessary to have different childcare because once people get hired at a union, they have to be the sole man on the totem pole, so to speak. And that really requires there to be childcare. So I mean, my thoughts is that I would love to see somebody from LaGuardia because they do, or community college, because they do a lot of the advancement stuff that we're talking about where people can get higher wages and often require people who get the foundational work that we're doing. And then someone from like who's doing childcare because they have to go hand in hand or where people can't take advantage of the off hours that are expected of people who first get hired with the union. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Lakeitha. Great, great notes to, I thought I heard somebody chime in. Did anyone have a comment? Okay. Yeah, you actually reminded, I can't believe I forgot about NIAC. But I recently, a lot of people have been asking like, what's going on with them? I know they've had leadership transition and I haven't heard much. So something for us to, you know, look into if if there's any kind of network things happening through them. But yeah, a lot of good points and and also just something, I don't know if Casey mentioned it when she was speaking, but 110 also brings in a lot of wraparound support services, the social support service partners and can potentially be a resource for us to check with and see, you know, who's providing those sort of really robust types of services that include childcare and things like that. So thank you for those notes. I see your hand raised.
Yes, so just quickly, and I'm sorry, I do have to have, I just wanted to know if it was going to be sort of like a contact list sent around of all of our different contact information, is a few people that I definitely wanted to connect further with, in addition to staying in contact with this group as a whole. But, you know, I know Larry sort of serves youth services and we do similar program. And so just looking to network further.
Awesome. So you are a great segue, Sheila, into what I was going to say or Dave. But I'll get started that, you know, for next steps, right? So to one quick update I wanted to give you, I think you all were a part of submitting information for the Good Jobs Challenge application, which went in February 10th. We don't know what it means, but Chuck Schumer's office reached out to us to ask for a copy of it. So we we got excited and then we were like, well, we don't know if there's a reason to get excited, but we'll keep you posted and I think it's probably months away before we'll really know anything, but we'll see. So good news there and thank you for your partnership in that. And then following this meeting, we will send out a a simple like Google Form survey just to collect who on your team, in addition to you, who was here, right? We'll share who was here, of course, but then who on your team, in addition to you, should be on this contact list and should be invited to the next meeting? And Dave, sorry if I'm biting on your lines of things you plan to share. But we, for this meeting, we were hoping to have, I don't know if any of you are familiar with Jade Breeve. She was recently appointed to a new position at the NYC DOE called Chief of Student Pathways. And we were hoping she was going to join today because she's doing like a major information gathering session to roll out an entirely new strategy at the DOE around student pathways. And she wanted to learn from all of you. So we, in the follow up, we'll have the survey about, you know, contact list, who else should be included? Maybe a couple of questions about what we work on as a network? And then dates to come together again. And hopefully, within the next like three to four weeks, we can find a date, at the very least, to have that kind of question and answer session with Jade because she wants you to inform the strategy and I want you all to be able to contribute to that.
Yeah, I, yeah, can I just say? For those of you who may have already been, you know, maybe already working at high schools and she wants to learn about how that experience has been, you know, how can that be improved? But the Chancellor Banks, you know, has said you know, has said that if he leaves no other legacy for his time with school is that it'll be that career integration will be at school. Like kids can go from their math class to their English class, their career class. And it's that I think that happens at three o'clock after school or happens on Saturday, right? And so he's made a real commitment to this in his first official announcement. Last week, I think it was, it was, I think, the first thing on his mouth, or the first initiative I was what was this. So there's a real commitment to it. And what we're trying to do is really having, you know, done some of this work in school, trying to figure out how we help them to build a type of system that makes sense. And not ask schools to do work that they're not expert at. Workforce organizations are the expert at workforce development. So we want the schools to work with the workforce organization. Of course, workforce organization has to learn schools, right? Because a lot of us don't understand schools. We have to, you know, do some work around our curriculum. As Larry know, they've done some really good work and they've brought their work to some of our stuff and folks have learned from it. And, and so this, having your early input, having a group that they can talk to, that Jade can begin to build kind of an advisory group around how do you, you know, integrate healthcare sector career, you know, conversation in schools and what that experience could look like. They're designing and building it now and they're hoping to kick some of this off in September. So we're hoping that our network, what I'd like to see is our network become her default group that she consults with as she builds out and we bring other people along to doing this. So so it's all, it'll be health, it'll be tech. And green is not quite in the mix yet. But the other pathways that they're interested in Jade's OB C computer for all. They don't really have any career integrated work much into that portion of their work. And then the other area for which I think Andre might be a more specialist around this is they want to do a a career integration pathway potentially into these are more like social sector jobs, right? Maybe after school. These are public sector jobs, right? And and that would have been known around with all of us been talking about for years. But so that, that's what she's looking at, those three areas, tech, healthcare and this kind of public sector type of job. We're hoping that we can, through your experience and your relationship, that you were hope to cultivate with her, that you guys can inform and advise on some of where they want to go with the DOE.
Thank you, Marjorie. Sorry, we're a few minutes over and thank you for staying and we will follow up in an email with the things that we promised we would.
Have a good afternoon, everyone.
Thank you.